Hi there.
Okay, hello everyone. So it's 3:45, so we'll start. So I just want to open with a few comment. They'll be short, just to kind of set the tone so everybody's on the same sheet of music. So first, thanks for everybody for coming. Thanks for counsel to take the time on Tuesday to discuss another issue. So thank you all for coming to listen to the council discussion. As you know, we've had some public input sessions, citizen surveys, you get emails, you get stuff online, you talk about, you discuss, and we've done that for some folks periodically over the last many years. Now we're at a council work session for policy to move forward or not, right? We'll still have, and I just want to keep everybody in the loop here, we'll still have six weeks of discussion on this issue because it'll go on the agenda. You'll have another public hearing, and then of course the council will have their opportunities with the public to discuss this again multiple times. So just setting a little, kind of some ground rules, folks, you've heard me do these before. So I'm going to ask that everybody keep their remarks to four minutes, meaning council members, for the first round and then second round, two minutes, and then we'll see where we're at, okay? As we all know, and we all, I love this council, we're professional, we keep the discussion at a general policy level. You've had the staff analysis, they're here, so was HR Green, but they're the detailed person and we're the policy folks. For the public, this is a council discussion, not a public discussion. Thank you to everybody that's coming to listen and be part of this, to hear what's going on, and thank you to the respective council folks that have engaged so many times and so many people, whether it's staff or others, to talk about this and quite frankly, many other issues. I appreciate the information-seeking, research-seeking folks that are sitting up at this place. But I'd ask that everybody, please keep this in context. We're talking about two streets. We do great work here, we do a lot of things, so let's be respectful, let's be professional as we always do, and I thank you for that. And as I always do, I'll simply look at my screen here, and this is for council to engage, and as you buzz in, I'll call on you, and again, four minutes, and then for the first round. So, thank you very much. Alderwoman McGinnis.
I had a question before we started. Is there someone from HR Green?
There is.
On the line?
They're here.
Here? I'm sorry, okay, all right. So can you, should we introduce?
I'd be happy, okay, that'd be fine. Thank you for that comment. Okay, so HR Green, whoever, our wonderful either city administrator or public works director, if you wanted to call their name and introduce them, if you'd stand up so everybody sees who you are.
Okay, so our city engineer, Brian Shet, is on the phone. He's on vacation this week, but wanted to hear the conversation, and HR Green was kind enough to peer review Gary and Brian's study, to kind of offer concurrence and suggestions. So here today, we have Andy Swisher and Mark Phipps. So, thank you.
Any other administrative notes from anyone? Since I gave one council folks, I better give everybody. Okay, administrative over, so any comments from council or alder folks? All right, no particular order. Alderman Dunn.
I guess nobody wanted to go first, but that's good.
I was gonna say, if we're not having comments, I'm calling it, so.
So I only got four minutes, so I know I had asked about the bus stops and parking and what we're gonna lose for block face. Did we ever come up with an answer for that?
So we did review best practices for transit. We reviewed the FTA manual on that, and they do actually leave it up to individual systems. From our transit perspective, buses need time to accelerate, so we would definitely want at least one to two blocks between bus stops regardless. Right now, we have a flag-down system. We don't have a fixed bus stop system. So really, it would be kind of up to us to, right now, we're trying to work on where are those primary congregation points, and I don't foresee those changing. We do have at least three, if not four, bus stops downtown currently, so at this point, I would foresee that staying the same. As far as loading zones and parking goes, those were both addressed in the parking study that was done in 2019. That study, in fact, had suggested adding loading zones. What I'm suggesting from staff's perspective is should council give policy direction to update the ordinance for a two-way, that we would work with the DDP to individually poll each business to find out frequency of deliveries, size of deliveries, and mechanisms. We wouldn't want to put in 20 loading zones if we need five. So we would, we would obviously, once a policy decision is made, we would have a year, you know, from the time construction would be starting anyway, to work with those businesses and narrow in on specifically where those would be. But we did not do that in advance because that would have been an extensive amount of work.
Okay, well, I'm just curious, because on my way down here, I got behind a bus that actually stopped in the travel lane, and it took three minutes to unload the bus, so we gotta do something different there because this won't work like that.
Okay.
I still, how much time I got left? Okay, the, one of my big concerns is the four-way stops, right? So this is an arterial street, correct? So we have arterial streets in Davenport. We've got Rockingham, Locust, Division, 53rd, Veterans, Marquette from Kimberly to 53rd. Where else, where else in the city of Davenport, on these arterial streets, do we control traffic with four-way stops and pedestrian crossings with four-way stops? You don't have to get me that answer today because I'll be out of time by the time you give me an answer. So I'm also concerned about the River Drive part of that, you know, that's that configuration. You know, we say we're gonna do it, we can do it with a certain kind of signalizing, but I'm kind of curious as what's gonna happen when we lose power. That's gonna be just total chaos. So, that's just a few questions I got, and I'm pretty sure I'm about out of time, so, next.
But if you're good, we'll move on.
Well, so, well, okay, so.
Four minutes, I'm not changing.
Just another question is, I know staff got directive to change the one-ways to two-ways and stay within this $1.6 million. I'm just wondering, you know, we're putting in these four-way stops and not reconfiguring River Drive to make it correct, just so we could stay underneath that and say we got it done. You know, I realize that it will work, but you know, a good farmer can make machinery work with duct tape and banding wire. I'm just hoping we're not cheapening this up and making things unsafe because we don't want to spend the extra money. So, thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Alderman Jobson.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just have a first question for the gentleman from HR Green. My question would be, in your peer review, was there anything that you found that would need to be shared with council that would contradict anything that was presented from our great city engineer and our traffic engineer? Did everything seem copacetic from your vantage point?
It was a, it was a good, clean report. It seemed very consistent with others I've seen and consistent with what you would expect from the technical content that's in it as well.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Yep.
Also, you know, I just, I probably have more comments here than questions going forward, but you know, I do want to say thank you to our staff and for those that have taken time. You know, I would, I would think that a lot of them are also elected officials, you know. One of the things that I've tried to do is maybe get their opinion, and I think they've done a good job of just presenting facts and kind of keeping their opinion out of it as much as I would desire for them to, you know, tell me one way. So I thank you very much for that. One thing that was said, you know, from our public works director, and I think she really hit the nail on the head, you know, this does come down to a philosophical decision, right? It does not appear that we're really fixing any problems, okay? You know, safety has been brought up, you know, speed data was presented that showed us that people aren't necessarily speeding, you know, en masse down here. When I spoke with staff asking about safety at intersections, you know, these aren't the most unsafe intersections that we have in our city by any stretch of the imagination. You know, other things to consider, recently we were presented with a housing study for downtown, and I believe that over 90% of rental units in the downtown area are occupied at this point in time. There's more demand, so, you know, having a current condition doesn't mean that they're driving people out of downtown. You know, we, I've said it before, I'll say it again, we need a very successful downtown. We want it to be vibrant. Hey, great for, place for people to live, you know, want to be able to go down and, you know, have good entertainment at the Adler Restaurants, you know, any retail shops, all those types of things. So definitely want that, but you know, it doesn't appear that, you know, the current state of the one-ways are driving people out of the downtown and making them not go there. You know, I've mentioned before that one of my personal issues is that there's not enough parking, right? You know, I mean, me as a lazy consumer, right, you know, if I'm going out to eat with my family, I'm gonna be able to park, get out, and just walk right there. I don't want to have to drive around a couple of blocks. You know, as we were presented information last week and as we talked about, I mean, now, parking might be even more of a challenge to people, all right? And so, so I do have that concern. I would, would, Second Alderman, Alderman Dunn mentioned, you know, about a study about loading zones and bus stops. We definitely need that information, so hopefully we can get that information before we continue to proceed, you know, as we go forth with any, you know, public hearings and any votes on ordinance changes, et cetera. So, so I don't think we're necessarily fixing any problems, and I do think we're potentially creating more problems. When we talk about parking, you talk about converting these arterial streets into four-way stop sign controlled intersections, so.
Thirty seconds.
My question here for this, for this first shot is, what would be the extra cost to make those intersections that are potentially planned to be four-way stops controlled by lights? What would that potential cost increase be? I'd like to know that information as well. Done for round one.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm trying to police myself. Thank you. But you can call Tom. I really appreciate, you know, everything staff has done, and I did sit down with staff. I did, I still had questions after the presentation, which is, this is a long process, so I'm not surprised at that. And, but I thank you for all of your work, and you did answer some, you know, in the meaning that I sought out and had with you, so talk about those today. I, I would, I would say that I believe that we could be fixing some problems to counter, you know, what was just said. You know, and let's keep in mind that we did not invent turning two-ways into one-ways as they did in 1954, or returning one-ways back to two-ways. Lots of cities have gone before us in both these things, and that we know we're a special city and we have special qualities, but we have, there are many characteristics that we share with other cities. So loading zones, parking, all of those things are, every city deals with that. So we should keep that in mind, and I would like my colleagues to think about this question. As we go through this process, why would we put in one-way streets anywhere in the city today? What would be the reason for that? So some of the questions that I've heard, and I've had, and I've wanted to be able to go and answer these and look for some studies that have been done, and that's what I've tried to do, and I'm gonna cover some of that today. If I get cut off, I'll do it, I'll finish it in my second, two minutes. But, so what about safety? Well, one of the, one of the studies that I read talks about there being less distracted driving, which correlates to one-way streets. So there's more distracted driving in one-way streets. Although there are more conflicting maneuvers, which was head-to-head turns in two-ways, people on two-ways are tending to pay more attention. Traffic signals and signs require more stops on two-ways, so there's less speed and again, more attention. Crashes between pedestrians and drivers on one-ways often happen when the auto turns. So it's not just about pedestrians and one-way streets, but it's when they turn, because there's a big wide area to turn typically, and so it's hard to see people sometimes. It's not, you know, drivers being, you know, difficult. From a crime standpoint, one-ways tend to create blind spots on streets that are never visible to drivers. You don't see back here when you're driving on the street, and I'm talking about crime off the street, in the alleys, you know, on the sidewalk. Two-ways tend to eliminate that issue because there are drivers looking both ways, so there's eyes on the street at all times. And if two-ways are subject to more crashes, I would say we would see a higher crash rate right now on our existing two-ways than we see in our one-ways, and I don't believe that we have that. So again, we already have two-way streets downtown, and the crash rate I don't believe is higher. There's also economic benefit to this, and this is where I think it does help, could help the downtown. Now, I come downtown a lot. I rarely have a problem finding a place to park, and close to where I'm going, so I do not share the experience of my colleague, and I do come down here quite a bit. So the economic benefit, there is a, and studies have shown this again and again, more stopping on two-ways correlates to more exposures for businesses. If cars are going more slowly, they're seeing what's on inside of them.
Thirty seconds.
And let's keep in mind that most downtown and west-side businesses are local, not big box. Businesses can only be approached from one-way on one-way streets. Two-way streets allow drivers to get closer to businesses without crossing the street, and they can get there. And I'll try to cover the rest of it. Efficiency, it's easier to get where you're going when you drive on two-ways. They can reduce the vehicle miles per trip, and while one-ways can move more traffic, a study showed that daily capacity is much higher on one-ways.
Please finish.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Ortiz.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. My questions are, and really anybody can ask, kind of a traditionalist, and with as many festivals and street events that we have downtown, would this change in two-ways allow for the same use as before, instead of blocking off one street with one detour, this is gonna be two detours because you're gonna have traffic going in both directions? Am I basically understanding that correctly? I hate to cut down on things that people have been doing for a long time.
I would say the city's commitment to special events in its downtown will not change. Logistically, there are problems we will have to solve, no different than when it floods or anything else. So they're just technical, technical issues that will be resolved.
Okay. My second thing is, with what Alderman, Alderman Jobson said, I'm really concerned with the four-way stop at Main. Some of the other ones I get, I understand, but I hope my colleagues will relook at that one and just give that a second thought. I just have a bad feeling about that one being a four-way stop. And then I'll just, we hear a lot of talk back and forth. I'm gonna give three things to my colleagues that I feel like if, to me, to get to the point of yes, I hope my colleagues will consider this. One, it has to go to Division Street. If we're talking safety, I cannot see turning left, going on, going heading east, and then all of a sudden, as you're coming to Marquette Street, the two inside lanes start to see headlights towards each other. That's gonna be a mess. So I hope they will consider going to Division Streets. Secondly, if we're talking about safety, no bike lanes. I didn't see it, or if I did see it in here, if I missed it, I'm sorry, but to me, this downtown, if you rode a bike, most likely from any good stretch of, from Davenport, from your house or somewhere else, most likely you didn't ride in a bike lane to get down here. So we need all the space we can get, and for safety reasons, I hope my colleagues would make that one of the conditions. And then the other one that I feel strongly about is no deliveries after 11:00 AM. I just feel like we need to keep these streets open. If we're talking about being a small business owner as I am, we need as much traffic moving by, as you know, people say, and parking open, so that way people can experience these good businesses that are downtown. We have alleys, we could put in loading zones and that, but I just think that those are three common sense things that, if you want to get me to yes, that I hope my colleagues will consider and, you know, going forward. There'll be a lot of discussions, and I look forward to hearing different things. So thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. So let's see, Alderman Greb.
All right, thank you. If I could have Gary and one person, or both people from HR Green, come up. What I'm going to do is make my statements first to maximize my time and then ask my questions second in case I run out of time. I've got some questions. Thank you. All right, so first off, I want to say I appreciate the city staff going through this process of seriously looking at two-way conversion in a thoughtful way. The study presented to us confirmed for me that two-way configuration is possible and can be done with a few challenges, but none that are insurmountable. I've stated my public opinion many times that I think two-way conversion is good for our downtown businesses, good for our downtown and west-downtown residents, and good for the health of Davenport at large. There's a sentiment among some that one-ways aren't broke and don't need to be fixed. I disagree with that statement, and I look forward to the opportunity to prove my case to my colleagues, my colleagues, that the one-way system is broke, it's bad for business, it's bad for neighborhoods, and there's a better way to do this. I look forward to having this on the agenda and having a full discussion at council, and I hope to be able to have the discussion on why two-ways are what's best for the city of Davenport as a whole. In terms of configuration, I will support the conversion at any of the stopping points, at Marquette, Division, or Telegraph. I would prefer to go as far as possible, but I'll work with my colleagues to come up with the best possible solution. So Gary, I'll start with you for questions, and if you don't have the answers, you can get them to me later. How many one-way streets do we have in Davenport?
I'd have to look it up.
When was the last time we put in a new one-way set?
Not in my time here, which has been since 2001.
Okay. When you're adding new streets to the grid, do you consider adding new one-way pairs to the system?
Not typically.
Why not?
I don't know, we just, we just don't. I mean, it's more convenient for, I mean, most of the streets we add to the grid, I mean, are in residential areas anyway, so it's not really an issue.
Okay. Do you have any concerns with the ability of the three-lane, two-way street configuration to handle the traffic demands of Second and Third Street?
No.
And level of confidence in that now?
Strong.
Strong, okay. And then I would have the same question for HR Green.
I would agree with his assessment.
Okay, so, traffic engineers, the traffic studies are saying, really, there is no concern with the two-way configuration with three lanes, with the middle turn lane. There is no concern with being able to handle that amount of traffic. Okay, all right. Now some questions specifically for you. Can signals that are being removed, can they be reused at other intersections?
We have done that, not some of them. I mean, some of them are in really bad shape, but we've used, reused them though, yes.
Okay. So when we did the, and maybe you're not the one for this, maybe there's somebody else from public work that's better, when we did the Davenport Go Multimodal Study, multi-modal was included in the downtown. I don't see it in this configuration. Can you speak to why that is, and if multi-modal is possible with this configuration?
Sir, so.
Thirty seconds.
From the conversation, Brian, and I had to keep the width of lanes to keep the traffic moving and moving comfortably, we would have had to narrow the lanes significantly to fit the bike lanes to the point where staff did not feel like it would be as comfortable to travel or as safe. So imagine Central Park 10-foot lanes and kind of how you feel scrunch there, similar to that.
Okay. Thank you. I disagree, but thank you. And that's it. The four minutes, and Gary, if I was grilling you, it was like, just I had the four minutes, so I appreciate it. I appreciate your willingness, thank you.
Okay, time's up, thank you. All right, next, Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Mayor. The cold open to this meeting felt a little clumsy to me, and I'm actually gonna use some of my time to act as like in a previous episode, so has some context. And so there's been some discussion about why we want to do this and who's asking for this, and as I talk about the downtown today, remember that the downtown, for me, is inclusive of both the residents, the business owners, the partnership, and the SMID, and all of the parcels down here, which pay an additional tax to give money to downtown partnership, which has worked to help us foster an environment that encourages reinvestment in our downtown, and it has done so for decades. It can be easy to lose sight of how far our downtown has come. What was blight is now a center for commerce, entertainment, tourism, celebrations, and it's simultaneously our fastest-growing residential neighborhood. No one program or investment is responsible for the successes we've had, but together working with our city staff and the downtown partnership, they've been able to help facilitate tremendous change. And universally, the council and people speaking for the city hold the downtown up as a success story, and I view it as an anchor for the continued reinvestment in our central heritage neighborhoods. And the interesting thing is, as I've always viewed the highest potential to be moving north from here, as we have this discussion, I can see so much more clearly that we have endless potential to the west as well. So, among the many things that downtown has identified for a long time that could have an impact on revitalizing our downtowns is the one-ways. And time and time again, that has gotten caught up in a bit of a tug-of-war, and that's okay, because again, it's no one singular program or change that has made all of this happen, and as we have not gotten one-ways done, the momentum that we've made in spite of that has continued to just build the case. And we've had a lot of success. Discussions about the downtown have always been a chicken-and-egg discussion, and, and again, residence is first, business is first, and when the two-ways come into effect, it's really okay. It perhaps made us better. But now, as the one-way, two-way conversation comes before us, it's once again being held up to a greater level of scrutiny than just about any decision that I've ever experienced here on the council. Typically, we hold things up to our staff who are accomplished, accredited, celebrated, and we let them work out that level of detail. We had a study that said fundamentally, will this work? The answer is yes, it can work either way. And I look forward to the philosophical discussion of whether or not this can work. When we had outside people come and discuss our logo, their observation of our city was really interesting to me. It was eye-opening. They said there's so many different experiences you can have as a resident here in downtown. There's historical neighborhoods, there's new construction, there's suburban, city, rural. It really just depends where you want to live. I asked my colleagues, please do not apply your suburban or uptown perspectives to an area that is unlike yours. Nobody lives downtown for the convenient parking. These people could live in a place with a two-car, three-car garage, but they choose to live downtown. In my eyes, the best restaurants, bars, entertainment venues are all in the downtown Davenport, and none of them chose to open up their businesses because of the ample parking spaces or the loading docks. They live downtown for the same intangible feeling that I can't quite describe that makes the conversion to two-ways so obvious. I just know it in my gut, and that's really what it comes down to. One of the most telling things that I asked staff was, what did the data that you gained from other cities tell you? And what they told us was, they don't have any data.
Please finish.
They didn't do a baseline study. They just did it because they knew it would work, and they adjusted along the way, and I think we can do the same. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm gonna start sounding like Alden the Chipmunk, so I'm gonna talk so fast. But I've got a couple of key questions, and I thank you very much for having the map. I did a map and an onsite look at the entire corridor, block by block, as well as looked at the traffic data that was given to us, and I found some integration between the traffic data and what's happening on the ground. What I found is, just like with the flood study, this is not a uniform corridor. I found four specific areas along this corridor, and on this end, there's the area with the really bad intersection where the two roads join up, and you've got the Y as well. Then you've got, and you've got the Y, the apartments, and whatever might end up in that triangle down there. The second one is between Pershing and Brown Streets, which is basically the downtown SMID. The third one that I found is the area between Brown and Washington Street, which is a mixture of small industrial-type businesses, small businesses and residents. And then the last one is the area between Washington Street and Telegraph, which is mostly residents, a few small neighborhood businesses and churches. So I see four different characteristic areas along this. And as I looked at the traffic data, I found that the traffic numbers seem to correspond with these areas. I'm going to repeat the question I've been asking from the beginning. This is a city project with a SMID component. This is not about downtown and only downtown. It's about the whole area between River Drive and Telegraph. With those four, what I see is different characteristics. What we've presented to the public is, here's the cost, and here's the problems we're gonna try to fix. We have not identified or communicated what are the needs for each one of these four areas? Why are we doing this? And the most important way to word this is what are the benefits to the folks who live here, work here, travel through here, travel around here? here, work here, travel through here, travel around here in each one of those areas? What are the benefits as it relates to the cost? So the comments we're getting are, I love it, I hate it, spend the money on fixing the roads, or I have a bunch of questions. And that is an absolutely fair response from the public, because we have not provided them the why. Why are we doing this in the first place? So I am requesting the needs for each one of those four areas and the benefits that the stakeholders, the folks that use those areas, will be getting for the cost. And I think we're going to move along much better once we get that information upfront. You can't say, I need the proposed action. You have to say, what is the problem? And here's what we're proposing to do about it. I've been doing planning for 40 years, and that's the biggest problem I've seen with planning. When they say, I need the proposed action, they don't explain why. So I'm looking forward to hearing the benefits for each one of those four areas from city management and staff. The second question, well, the second point I have is, I looked at the traffic numbers that you gave. Thank you very much. This was very powerful. And if anyone wants to look at this? We are, DOT is collecting data right now on downtown and along this area, as far as I know. I've seen DOT out in other areas. The information we have is from 2018, which is before the flood, before a lot of the apartments, before a lot of things have changed, including COVID.
Please finish.
Okay. So I would like to see the updated numbers, so that we can compare them to 2018, and then get another map, so we can see the changes. And so with those two things, I think we'll have complete initiation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Okay. Before I go to the other, the folks that have already talked, anybody want to? Okay. Alderman Cornet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to represent the people of Seventh Ward and Davenport. My people say, and my wards say, what's it going to do for me? And I know that that's sort of territorial, but, and I can't point to anything that's going to make life better for them. We're pouring all this money into downtown to keep it, to make it better, make the world better. People that I've talked to at Davenport want their wards to be getting an equal share of the money. I don't think I can support the change unless somebody can come up with a benefit, show me what that benefit is, other than we'll have two-way traffic on Third and Fourth Streets. We keep talking about, well, a third street plus, we're not going to.
We have to detour and all this stuff. So two-ways could help that out. Well, my understanding is, is that we're fixing the sewer there at Third Street, where it does flood, and that won't be a problem anymore. Is that correct, staff?
So we do have a project to rectify the storm sewer there, and it'll be a phased project, but eventually it will, it will get us.
Not flood.
Yes.
Okay. So the flooding problem really isn't a problem. I agree with Alderman Ortiz that I like signals better than four-way stops. And I just can't support the increased cost of going two-way, you know, from one-way. The extra expenditure would be how much on your original proposed plan?
I was going to say, Clay will pull up the slide, but the original limits that staff was asked to look at is the 1.2, or sorry, 1.6 you see there, and then the analysis that was requested to add on.
Okay. So $2 million more just to make it two-ways?
Correct.
I don't, I just don't see it. So I know I have a sort of a simple approach to these things, and doesn't jive with a lot of people on council, but hey, just speak in my mind, and for the people of the Seventh Ward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Cornet. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, sir. I apologize for my tardiness, and I won't give you guys Sesame Street storytime, because we all have other things that we would like to be doing, I'm sure. I'm not going to give you where I am, what I feel, or anything like that. I just have a couple of quick questions of like, I see all the support of what it's for, but I never see any of the business owners in any setting of anything that I've gone to, to like, say that there's somebody that's in support of that. So I posed that to you, Kyle. That's one thing that I always wonder about. And I, I don't know. I want to say more, but I'm just at a loss, because I hear a whole lot, but I don't understand a lot. I'm not doing studies. I'm not, I'm talking to people. I go out and I speak to the folks, and I speak to the people in my ward, and I speak to the folks in and on Third and Fourth Streets. Some of these folks that aren't being spoken to on a normal, daily basis, some of the folks that are further down west, you know what I mean? So I don't know, this is a hard sell for me, but I could see either way. But it's just a hard sell, because I don't see everybody being included as far as all some of these things that folks are asking for. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Okay. We'll go to the second round. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will try to keep this brief. I did, I had two studies. I'm going to save one, but I'll talk about another one that I think tests pretty well. I go to facts. I don't think it is about personal preference. I think it's somewhat about facts as well. So a safer, efficient, this example is from New Albany, Indiana. It's across the river from Louisville. It's the only free bridge after the tolls were placed on the Louisville bridges. So this was, this was going to attract a lot of people. Now, it's a town of 36,000 people, about the size of Vettendorf, but the metro area is 1.275 million people. So that potentially a lot of traffic. They, what they did, they did this and started planning 2014, finished 2017, four miles of one-way streets that they had that would attract more cut-through traffic at higher speeds if they were left the way they had been turned into one-ways. They did it, a letter, this is from the police chief, accidents involving pedestrians were down, speeding was reduced, motor vehicle crashes were down, especially with injuries. Felt that the police department had more options to redirect traffic in case of, you know, an emergency of some sort, you know, a streak down or whatever. Felt that vehicles and cyclists and pedestrians interacted in a smoother manner. Police chief also felt that it facilitated, at the end of the day, a better response time for police and fire. The Public Works Director said that the businesses really liked it. They're planning to convert another mile of one-way street to two-way. The sense that I got from reading this, that all of their outcomes, and this is important, were not expected at the time the change was made. There was some tweaking and improvement going along. Fire and police, it felt like they had seen that. And that was a little bit with my discussion with staff, what was happening in Cedar Rapids. Cedar Rapids didn't have every single thing figured out. There have been a lot of questions.
Ten seconds.
About loading zones, and it's, they sort of figured themselves out. I'm not saying we planned that way, but I'm saying some of these things evolve and appear as changes happen. Thank you.
Please. Perfect. Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Jocelyn.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Quick question first, City Administrator. So procedurally, if, you know, we made decisions from a policy standpoint that took this project over the 1.7 million that's kind of been in the six-year plan, is there anything that changes procedurally? So say we want to go to Division Street, that's an extra 500K. We say no-stop signs, we want streetlights, which are other whatever. Is there any change procedurally?
So at, I'll compartmentalize that into two things. You are going to give staff policy direction. That is your responsibility with this issue. You determine what those edges are. Gary, Brian, and Public Works will make recommendations that comply with MUTCD and what's right for the safety of our community. Then it becomes a Clay and Mallory conversation about, that is unbudgeted, so what's the opportunity cost? Where, where will we get the funds to complete it? It's not, can we get the funds? You all know our financial position. That's not the concern. It's really the opportunity cost of what, what will we be giving up to do this project within the scope that the council has given us direction to do.
Thank you. And then I have one question for Traffic Engineer Gary Stats. Gary, you made a comment about the few one-ways that we have being in residential neighborhoods. How many of those one-ways in residential neighborhoods are we looking to convert to two-ways? Because if going from one-ways to two-ways is safer, and downtown's looking to become a neighborhood, wouldn't we want to do the same for all of our residential neighborhoods that have one-ways?
I'm not sure how many residential areas have a one-way. The only thing I, near Monroe Elementary, I can think of that, one-way pair, but 14th, 15th, I guess, would be.
Ten seconds.
I haven't really thought about.
None of them, right?
Right. Yeah.
Good. So my last thing is philosophically, you know, I, you know, we talked about.
Please finish.
The different areas. You know, I've always viewed downtown as, thanks, Gary, I've always viewed downtown as what kind of has that big-city feel, right? Buildings are taller, things are just moving a little bit faster, you've got the beautiful lights of the Adler Marquee, those types of things.
Thank you, Alderman Jocelyn.
And hope it stays that way. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Condon.
If you think like a hammer, everything is a nail. And if you think like a driver, everything is dumb. It's very true. As soon as you get behind a wheel, anything that slows you down is just in your way. So much discussion is being had about what it's like to be in traffic, and I know this is a traffic discussion, but please don't overlook what it's like to be a pedestrian, a resident, or a visitor in our downtown. If you were to look at what the trajectory of our downtown has been for the last 20 years, you would see that it is trending in the opposite direction of moving traffic as fast as possible and making it a safe, inviting place to live, play, visit. I graduated high school in 2000, 2000, and this stuff works. There was a study recently that said we're the most attractive city for millennials. What kept me here was the plans that we had for our riverfront and the direction that our downtown was moving. I've lived downtown off and on for 20 years, for the better part of 20 years. If I was a haircut, I'd be the guy that's balding on top or growing a ponytail on back, because I've got five kids, and I still live downtown. It's my home. It's my neighborhood. I know, I know the city. Don't mistake good, practical questions that need to be worked out by staff, like they always do, for it being a bad idea. Anecdotally, I walked up to the Frito-Lay truck, and I said, hey, has anybody ever asked you to make that delivery in the alley? And he said, nope. All of these buildings have alleys. They all utilize them for garbage pickup. Many of these things are good, practical questions, but it, you know, the results of the traffic study was, this works either way philosophically, what do we want downtown to be? And I think the last 20 years of the private marketplace investing in the downtown is telling us what we, Davenport, view the downtown as. And I think the conversion is the right step to take.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderwoman Lee.
Okay. Don't count that for 10 seconds. First of all, I'm glad you've got that up on your screen, because looking at Division is where the railroad crosses and goes from Wilkes over to Division, and it's the Interstate Railroad right there. And I really think the money that was included in the West End needs to be moved over to the middle there, because if you go to Division, you're still going to have to address the railroad crossings. There's already infrastructure there. It would probably have to be reconfigured for two-way, but I think the money that got thrown into the West End is not fair to the West End, because it needs to go into Division. I also think it's feasible to go to Marquette. It's feasible to go to Division, but it is not safe or in logical termini, what federal highways would call a logical termini. I think the only safe place, so that you don't have cars going at each other and playing chicken, is to go over to Telegraph. And that's just from a logical point of view. I also want to say, I did a review of this parking study in 2019 that you folks were sent, and I found a lot of problems with assumptions in that, and the conclusions were not necessarily reflecting what the reality was at the time. I think the intersection at River Drive needs to be more than a painting issue. That is a real, serious traffic problem, and we need to look at that in more detail, on how we can make that safe, particularly with the Y and the apartments that are going over there, and whatever goes into that triangle to the south. I also have the question of, what happens if we change an arterial to a collector? Which is what this would do, two-way. Does it affect our funding? Does it affect our ability to get federal grants?
Ten seconds.
Okay. And I've got lots more questions, but that's enough for today. We've got six weeks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Second time. Alderman, Alderman Dunn.
Looking at this, you know, a lot of folks said about traffic, right? I was really surprised how slowly it's speeding up, but actually probably some of the sports people seeing that, considering we do not have a speed limit on anywhere downtown. That's amazing. So I guess I'm just going to leave it at this. I really haven't heard what the problem is, so I guess, we spend millions of taxpayer dollars on a problem we don't have, creating a problem.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Anyone else? I'm pausing, because once they go to me, I'm not letting y'all. Okay. So I'll just make a couple of small comments. So first, thanks for everyone being involved, the council's consideration, some council folks for a long time, some council folks do details or do whatever they do. And we're all individuals, and I really appreciate, and I really thank, the individual particular efforts, because that's what makes democracy and things role, is individual thought processes from different perspectives. And we certainly have different perspectives here, depending on whatever it is you are. I thank the citizens of Davenport in many respects, whether you emailed, called, came to public meetings, did whatever you did, walked by, saw me on the street, saw someone else get a park, and said, hey, I'd like to talk to you about that. Again, very important. Thank you, H.R. Green, for taking the time to, one, be here tonight, and be involved in a heck of a lot of important things that this city's doing, whether it's flood streets or whatever. Thanks to the staff for all your time that you've taken to this point to discuss, whether it's with city council folks and me, as we pick your brain or push your brain, or get after you, whatever, and ask you to, you need to make the decision going this way, or you need to make the decision going that way, and that's not your job, is to make the decision, the decision's here. Thanks to downtown partnership, anybody else involved for giving your thoughts, and this is a good discussion, but we've got a lot of discussion to go. I said it at the beginning. There's yet to be put on the agenda, which will happen soon, but there's a big public hearing at the beginning of that. Then there's six weeks of more discussion and more analysis and more questioning that will develop. I do agree with Alderman Condon. I've been, my colleague on the far end there, I'm the longest, and I've, the discussion of these two streets versus other places and other things is quite interesting. There must be some gold in these streets, because the discussion, which is good, is much more than, and maybe deservedly so, but I want to keep everybody in context that, at the end of the day, that's what we're talking about. Do we change the streets to two-ways, or do we leave them alone? The downtown folks have done a wonderful job in what they do down here. So if it doesn't pass, they'll continue to do the work, the staff will continue to do work, the council will continue to do the work to make this city. If you didn't see the headline in the Quad City Times the other day, there's some millennials really liking this dag gum place, right? And so people have analyzed that, financial folks have analyzed that, and said, this is the number-one city. So there must be something going on here. The other points I'll make, I've said it before, it's an evolution. We're up here. We know what the downtown was like. Some of you know what it was like a long time ago, and boy, is it different now, and that's a great thing, right? It is a neighborhood, wasn't a neighborhood before, now it's a neighborhood. Moving forward's better than moving backward. I thank you for the discussion. There'll be much more. Appreciate, but remember, we're policy, they're the executor. If the decision is to do it, and you're still concerned about a particular couple of things, and changes, or stop signs, or loading zones, or all that, that's what they get paid for, and that's what the challenge will give them. In partnership. and that's what the challenge will give them, in partnership, as we always do, with a lot of folks around here, right? If this is decisions to not do it, so be it. We continue to grow, we'll continue to do wonderful things. If the decision is to do it, then there'll be a lot of things that have to be worked on. Okay, in partnership with a lot of folks, we do, that'll happen, too. Don't get caught up in the individual little tiny things, because those are dealt with in some fashion. Again, some people might not be happy, and if it doesn't happen, don't get caught up in the, oh, my God, it's the end of the world, because no, we'll continue to do great things in partnership with folks. So, again, thank you for everything. I look forward to going on the agenda soon. I'll just give it the, as I always do to the city minister, any last moments from your folks? And as a courtesy to our friends who have helped us out, H.R. Green, anything else you'd like to add to this, or for the council to hear? I am going a little out of context. I don't consider you public at this moment. I consider you an advisor.
I have nothing else to add.
Okay. Then, I look forward to the agenda. I look forward to the public hearing and the council discussion. Thank you very much.